2015. Can we have the roll call, please?
Barbara Brenner?
Here.
Red Brown?
Yeah.
Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Sam Crawford?
Here.
Pete Cremmon?
Here.
Ken Mann?
Here.
Carl Weimer?
Here. People will stand and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a couple of quick announcements. If you have your cellphone with you, if you can put it on silent or vibrate. I'm gonna try to figure out how to do that on my own here. I wouldn't want you to hear what mine sounds like when it goes off. And the other thing during the open session this evening, if you have any handouts, it's really good if our clerk gets one, too, for the record. I wanna start out this evening with a really important announcement and a commemoration. Tonight, as I think many of you know, is Mr. Crawford's last meeting, which I think is after, what, fifteen-plus years? And the council has... I told you you'd be the next one to get placked.
Oh, yes.
The council has this plaque that we had prepared for you, and it just says, "We thank you for your dedication and contributions to Watcom County and its people. With your departure, you carry with you the warmest regards and best wishes of all Watcom County council members and council staff." And we wanted to thank you for your fifteen years of service. Wish you good luck in your new endeavors. And it's been a pleasure serving with you. Always thoughtful consideration and well represent the people of Watcom County. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl. I appreciate it. And, uh... Well, I don't wanna make a big speech. I was just gonna say that it's been a pleasure working with you guys. We disagree often, but, uh... Nonetheless, we've got a good level of professional respect for each other. And I think there... Even though we may disagree, we also know that each of us carries the desire to do the best work we can on behalf of the people we represent. It's an honor to be here, to be elected. We all feel that and are very humbled by that. And, of course, I feel no different. So, thank you to all of you. Thank you to staff. And I could start naming names, but like I said, I don't wanna make a big, long speech here. So, um, let's move forward. And God bless you guys and good luck watching over county government. I think we're in good hands, and I'm optimistic about the future.
Great. Thanks again.
You're gonna miss it.
Yeah.
All right. We're gonna move on to our first piece of business, which is approval of two sets of minutes. A special committee of the whole for October fourteenth, 2014, and a special committee of the whole for November twelfth, 2014.
I'll so move.
All right. Ms. Brenner has made the motion. Is there any discussion or corrections? Mr. Brown?
Um, I had actually put some corrections in. I don't know if they've been reflected in the final minutes.
Was it in a set of committee of the whole minutes?
Um... To be honest, I don't remember which minutes it was.
There was a set that Jill pulled off of the agenda, so it was probably in there.
All right. Any other discussion?
Just one thing.
Ms. Brenner?
Um, if people find inconsistencies or something that needs corrections, the best thing is to take it to Jill so she can get them ready.
No, that's exactly what I did.
What?
That's exactly what I did.
Okay. Well, then, everything's fine.
And there was one set of minutes that was withdrawn, and it's probably the ones that she's fixing. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those pass unanimously. We're gonna move right into our open session, and this is where anybody from the public can come and talk to us about whatever you like for three minutes. As you come up to the microphone, if your name is more complicated than Jones or Brown, spell it for us. And you'll get a warning when you have about thirty seconds left.
Yeah.
You know the drill.
It'll be quick. Watcom County... I just personally wanted to come out and thank Sam for all the work he's putting. He's helped me a lot several times, too. And I really wanna wish you the best in your new career, 'cause it sounded like a great opportunity. So, thanks, Sam.
Thanks, Chris.
Same, Larry Helm. It's welcome, I grow. Same for me, Sam. Good luck in your new business. Small business life is really difficult these days. I'm here, I wanna just take a little bit of exception to what was said today at the Natural Resources Committee. There was a statement made that the Nooksack River is the most polluted river in the state. I... I don't think that gives credit to all the farm plans and nutrient management plans and the tremendous amount of effort the agricultural communities made in our county to clean up that river. And if we're gonna define the river on phosphate and nitrate, we need to say that when we say it's polluted and not just make a flat statement like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Another former council member.
Greetings, council. Pleasure to be here. Uh, I, too, just want to...
And your name, please?
Oh, Seth Flea, Bellingham, sorry. Yeah, it's easy up there. I've always noticed that. Standing here at this dais, it's kinda scary.
Scary, huh?
Sam, best of luck to you. I was surprised, like everyone else, when I heard that you were quitting your position on the council, but you had good reason to do so. You've had a long career on the Watcom County Council. You and I disagreed quite vehemently on certain issues over the years, land use and environment. We both had different visions. I expressed one opinion, and you expressed quite another. But despite that fact, I always respected you. Sam had a great capacity to dive into complicated issues and understand them well and articulate them well. Uh, and I always appreciated that about you. And I became friends with you. And we're proof...
Shh.
Yeah, I know. Sorry. That was our secret. We're proof, though, that I could be the crazy liberal environmental wacko, and you could be the right-wing, whatever the label is. But we can still be friends and still communicate. I wish you the very best.
Thank you very much, Seth.
You bet. Good night.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening? No one else during open session? All right. I'm gonna close the open session, and we're gonna move right on to our business. And the first is the consent agenda from the Finance and Administrative Services Committee. Mr. Brown?
Oh. Sorry. Uh, Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee met today, and, um, the... With the consent agenda, items one through seven, all passed unanimously, and I so move that... I so move approval.
All right. We have a motion in front of us. Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, could, um... Let's see. There it is. Could we please remove number five?
Okay. We're gonna pull number five. Mr. Mann?
I'd like to pull number six.
Five and six. So, we're voting on the consent agenda items one, two, three, four, and seven. Any others? See none? All in favor of those, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those pass unanimously. On to number five. Can I describe that one for us? Mr. Brown?
So, number five was a resolution requesting the council approval for an interlocal agreement for participation in the Watcom Council of Governments. That item also met with unanimous approval. I so move.
All right. So, we have the motion in front of us. Ms. Brenner?
Yeah. All we received was a... Was this copy of it without showing us what the former copy said. And I requested a copy of the changes before this evening, and I don't remember getting it. I didn't see it. Did we...
Executive Laus?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Administration did look for that. It came to... Came to note that the Watcom Council of Governments had that original. They shipped the changes over to us. It was reviewed by Deputy Prosecutor Gibson, as you can see by the signature on there. So, we were unable to obtain that this afternoon. If the council so wishes to hold it, we can get that for the member at a future date. But I will let you know is that it was fully reviewed by civil attorney. The full board of the Watcom Council of Governments did approve this interlocal. I reviewed it when it came in a few weeks ago, and we're just getting it on the agenda for approval this evening.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Brenner?
Well, it's my understanding, the attorney reviews it for form, not for whether it's what we should have in place of the other one. And I appreciate that the exec... I'm fine. I appreciated that the executive took the time to try to explain what some of the changes were. But I really, you know, I trust but verify. I'd really like to see those changes.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I do know for a fact that the staff at the Council of Government asked specifically the City of Bellingham attorney and our attorney to go through it word by word. And I know that Mr. Gibson did make track changes and notes that were sent back to them. So, as I say, we'd be more than happy to get it to you if you'd so wish.
All right. So, we have a motion in front of us. Ms. Brenner?
And again, they look at it for a certain reason. They don't look at it about if it's the right approach or this or that. It's just... It's about form. So, I appreciate that they made changes on top of the changes that were made by the Council of Governments. But I still feel like usually, if not always, when we get something that's changed, we have something that it changed from. And I would like to see it. It's probably not a big deal, but I think we should see it.
All right. So, we have the motion in front of us.
I move we table it till we get that material.
Okay. So, there's a motion to table this until we find out what was changed in that interlocal agreement? I think that takes precedence. We're not even supposed to discuss it much. So, all those in favor of tabling it, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, that fails five to two with Ms. Brenner and Mr. Mann in favor of tabling. So, now we have the original motion in front of us again. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Uh, so that passes five to two with Ms. Brenner and Mr. Mann opposed. Item number six.
Mr. Chair, item number six is a request for authorization for the approval of the City of Nooksack's supplemental request for additional EDI funding in the amount of $180,000 as recommended by the EDI Board, and authorization for the county executive to amend the interlocal agreement with the City of Nooksack to reflect the additional monies. This also received a three-zero vote in favor, and I so move for approval.
All right. We have the motion in front of us. Mr. Mann?
So, I ask for this one to be polled because I am not going to vote for it. You've heard me talk about this before, but I think cities should be paying for their own wastewater and water treatment plants. That's what cities do. And if they're growing too quickly or they can't afford their wastewater treatment plant maintenance, that's on them. That's on the people of that city, not on the people of the rest of the county. And to have the project be delayed by a year and a half at most and the project cost go up by fifty percent is pretty dramatic. So, for a couple of reasons, one is the principle of just, I think, a city should pay for their own wastewater treatment plant. And the second thing being the huge increase over a short period of time, I think should also raise some questions. So, I can't support it.
All right. I'll just let you know why I do support it, and I share many of your concerns. But previously, there used to be lots of grant money available for these types of wastewater treatment plants through the Department of Ecology, and a lot of that money has dried up. So, a small city like Nooksack is hard-pressed to come up with the amount of money. A lot of the cost overruns were out of Nooksack's control, 'cause this is actually an Everson wastewater treatment plant, and that's where many of the cost overruns were. And Nooksack's just kind of along for the ride. So, I support this little additional money. Ms. Brenner?
Yeah. I also think this was recommended by the EDI Board, and I do put a lot of faith in what they're doing and why they do it. But I do know that this is for... Well, this is one of the main needs that you have to create more business. And we had a presentation today on the urban growth areas and stuff, and it showed a chunk... That Nooksack's got a chunk that it's gonna be growing. And I did speak to one of the council members out there about, you know, tell me what's going on. And they said a lot of the extra water needs do have to do with creating more business. So, I think this is a good fit.
Any other discussion? Mr. Mann? Oh, Mr. Brown first, then. Mr. Mann?
I will support this, but I do also wanna make it clear that I think EDI money should be more directed towards things that create jobs as opposed to, you know, as you say, building wastewater treatment plants, unless it's directly tied to job growth.
Mr. Mann?
And thank you, Mr. Chair. And that is what I was gonna say, is, you know, I looked really closely at the EDI standards and the application from Nooksack. And this is their wastewater treatment plant for the whole city and people's homes and residences. So, it's great. It'll benefit them. But EDI money, economic development investment money, is for something that's tied to jobs. And even the examples they give in the EDI handbook say, you know, a wastewater treatment plant for a business park or something like that, not for an entire city or to make up for maintenance or to expand. So, to me, it's close, but if we didn't justify this, and we did it in Linden, too, and I voted against that one, but then you could justify anything as being EDI. And I think we should be a little more selective.
Ms. Brenner?
Just... I agree with a lot of what you're saying, but I... You cannot have business if you don't have water. And they're not gonna be able to put in any more new businesses. Forget about anything else they're gonna be able to do with it. They're not gonna be able to grow at all if they don't upgrade their water. And we... You're right. We did it for Linden, and I supported that. And the EDI Board recommended that, and they recommend this. So, I appreciate that you stay firm to your position.
Any other discussion? All right. We have the motion in front of us to approve this request for authorization for the Sea of Nooksack. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, that passes six to one with Councilmember Mann opposed. On to other items from Finance.
Mr. Chair, there was a resolution recognizing that the LEED, Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design, Silver Certification for the New Jail and the Sheriff's Headquarters is not feasible. That item was discussed in committee, and I can't remember the exact wording, but it's been... We're postponing it until approximately, was it about next year, I think?
I... I don't know if it requires any action on the part of the council. The motion of the... To the committee passed was to postpone any decision on this until next... Till about a year. And that was based on members of the executive staff explaining that although the planning was gonna go forward without the geothermal component, that, you know, final decisions on that didn't necessarily need to be made at this stage. Whether the council needs to take any action on that, I don't know.
Ms. Brenner?
Also, there was a person who had indicated interest and had written to us. And he's an architect who has done LEED-certified buildings. I think he said he's done a LEED-certified jail. And one of the places where he didn't... I don't know. He had a... He made a statement that we could do the LEED without putting in the geothermal thing that I can't remember what it is. But so, he... I believe he's gonna be speaking to Tyler Schroeder about this, and they're gonna be maybe working on some things that might work out. And we're gonna get a presentation on LEED versus EAGLE, which the City of Ferndale put together as a very high environmental standard. And it seems to work really well for local types of projects because of our climate, because of a lot of things that we have here that is specific to Watcom County.
All right. So, it's my understanding, the resolution about regarding LEED has been kind of postponed for perhaps as long as a year to when engineering is more robust and we're ready to make some of those decisions. So, I don't think there's any action required from the council.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. The next item was an ordinance amending the Watcom County Code 3.08 Purchasing Systems. This item also was held in committee, if I remember correctly, until the last meeting in March.
All right. So, Finance has held the purchasing system ordinance in committee?
Say something about it.
Pass secret notes?
It's not for me. I just didn't wanna pass it down, so...
All right. Did you have a comment?
Oh, yeah. I have a comment. I wanted to say that this came up at budget time, and I very specifically did not support the... Specifically, it was about the project-based funds that we only have this 30,000-foot view of it one time. And then, if we pass it, all the contracts go through the executive, and we don't see anything. I don't like that, although... And it's great. We do get these quarterly reports, but thereafter, things have already been done, which doesn't help a lot. And they... We were told that it'll go up on the website, which also doesn't give a lot of transparency to the public in that they don't have an opportunity to comment and talk about it like they do when it comes to the council. It was brought up that we have to be efficient, and we're not... This isn't efficient, that this could hold things up. And we're not a business. We are government, and if we have to choose between transparency and efficiency, I think the public... I think a lot of times, they would prefer transparency. And I think we do a very good job as a government. We're a check and a balance, and that's what we need to keep doing.
Okay. So, my understanding is the committee has held this in committee for approximately a month, at which time the county administration is coming back to us with more information on this subject. So, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So, nothing needs to be done here either. Moving on to request confirmation of the county executive's reappointment of David Kinselow, Mike Macinari, Larry Richardson, Mark McDonald, and the new appointment of Rachel Herman to the North Sound Mental Health Advisory Board. So, a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
All right. Mr. Brown has moved approval? Is there any discussion? Mr. Mann?
I'll just say, as the representative on the North Sound Mental Health Advisory Board, and I know these folks very well from interacting with them, and they do a great and thorough job, and I appreciate their service, and we should vote for them.
All right. So, the motion to confirm these appointments is in front of us. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next is an appointment of interim committee members to serve on the council's Natural Resource and Finance and Administrative Services Committee until the soon-to-be Council District Two vacancy has been filled. Dana and I had talked about this, and this is just a way to fill out those committees for one, maybe two meetings at most, so we can conduct business. So, what we're looking for is people for Finance and Natural Resources. Ms. Brenner?
Um, I'll put my name in for Finance.
All right. Other? Others? All right. Mr. Mann?
Oh, you know what? He's done... He does a good job when he was on Finance, so he can have it. I'll be there, but you can have it.
For Natural Resources?
No. I want Finance.
All right. Mr. Mann has volunteered to fill the slot on Finance, at least temporarily. Any other volunteers for Finance or Natural Resources?
I'll do Natural Resources, too. That's fine.
Well, why don't you do Natural Resources, and I'll do Finance?
That doesn't work so well for me.
Oh.
Sorry. I mean, this is only for, what, a couple meetings?
I know.
One, probably.
Yeah. I'll do them both. That's fine.
Well...
I know how Sam would vote.
Well, you're not gonna vote how Sam would vote.
Doesn't mean he'll vote that way.
Exactly. I know how Sam would vote.
Mr. Brown?
Well, and I'd be happy to do Natural Resources. I obviously can't do Finance, 'cause I'd get two votes.
You're already there. Yeah.
We'd have to change the rules for that.
I'll do Finance. That's great.
Okay. Mr. Mann has volunteered for Finance. Mr. Brown has volunteered for Natural Resources. Are there any other self-nominations or other nominations? See none? All those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Oh, man, we're to the end of the agenda already.
Pretty close.
Uh, this is a council to approve an interview and nomination process for filling the soon-to-be vacant District Two position on the Watcom County Council using the county code and the county charter as guidance. And I think you've all seen... Our clerk has sent out what the code and the charter say. What we wanted to talk about this evening was a little bit about expanding on that process. And I don't have it in front of me, Dana. I don't know if you wanna go over just what the deadline for applications is and kind of the rules in place. But then we wanted to have a discussion about how you wanna handle that meeting, our first meeting in March, whether we wanna have public interviews, as in people come up to the mic and give us five minutes of why you wanna be on the county council?
Are you talking about... Oh, you're talking about... Okay. Sorry. I was looking at the Loma Island Ferry thing.
Right.
So, I was not thinking about council.
That's on here.
The chair snuck that in.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. I wasn't paying attention. Okay. Got it.
All right. So, when is the application due date? I don't know.
They're due by 4:00 PM on next Wednesday. Actually, it's Thursday, the nineteenth.
Okay. So, a little over a week, the applications are due in. To date, we have one valid application?
Correct.
All right. Ms. Brenner?
Well, Dana sent us out a question thing about, do we wanna do something or do... I like her idea of letting her, you know, put them all together, and then we get it all at the same time, rather than kind of giving them to us as she gets stuff, which I'm not sure there's gonna be a lot to get, but...
Well, I had differing... Some council members want it one way, some the other. Well, I had differing, some council members want it one way, some the other, so I don't mind doing...
And some have no preference.
Correct, so I, I mean, I don't think it has to be...
They'll certainly be in the packet, I mean, that's why we had the Thursday cutout, so they'll be in the packet all at once.
And I don't think it has to be the same for all of you, if you just want to get all of yours at the end of the process, and Red wants to get his as they come in, I don't mind distributing them that way, that's fine with me.
Well, it's, I don't have like any strong preference, but it just seems like it would be easier if we see them all together, but, for me, but I don't care.
Okay.
So the way it's, work under the code is the applications will be due in a little over a week, and we can all get them either as a packet or individually as they come in. That will give us until March 3rd to review those. We could decide tonight that people are free to contact people, take them out for coffee, talk to them on the phone, do whatever you want individually, or we could decide tonight that we don't want council members doing that individually, and we should somehow do it as a group. And then we also need to decide what we want to do on March 3rd. My original thought was, the city council just went through this, and they went through a process where they invited all the applicants to come in and speak for three or five minutes, I think five minutes each, kind of their stump speech, why do you want to be on the county council, what do you bring to it? That would be public, everybody would be here, we'd start our meeting a little early that evening, if we have a whole slew of candidates. And then after that meeting, we could either vote that evening for who the appointment would go to, or we could wait for two weeks later to make the appointment, to give us more time to interview people. So those are kind of the discussion points. Ms. Brenner?
I like the idea of having them come up and give a three or five-minute stump speech. I think that's kind of neat.
Other thoughts on that?
Well, I also agree with the stump speech idea, and I, I mean, for all other positions we allow, I guess even encourage the council members to reach out to the applicants and talk to them, I don't know why we would restrict the council members from doing that this time around.
Mr. Mann?
Well, I hope they have more substance in their stump speeches than some of the stump speeches I've heard, but I also would like to say, I think we should be able to talk to them in private as well. Not, not because it needs to be secret, but I just think it'd be nice to be able to have a personal conversation with them and get to know them a little bit before the vote.
Mr. Cremmon?
Well, I'm inclined to choose the, the public forum process, rather than behind closed doors, meeting behind closed doors individually. I think, and I, personally, I wouldn't characterize it as a stump speech, you know, I would classify it as an opportunity for each candidate to express to the council and the public why they're seeking to be appointed to the position, and I think that having transparency and having it out in the public is the preferable way to, to select the successor to Mr. Crawford. And I guess, so I, I would, I would encourage the council to, you know, to, to have it as a formal public process.
Mr. Buchanan?
I, I like the combination of both, myself. I'd like to be able to see the applicants in public, deliver their message, and I'd also like to be able to have an opportunity to have lunch or coffee with them as well, just to get to know them. I would prefer kind of both being used.
Mr. Cremmon?
Well, I'm not adverse to that, but I do think that the initial contact should be, should be in front of the public, in front of us, and then afterwards, you know, after that, you know, I think, you know, I, I would encourage all of the, the candidates or would-be candidates to go ahead and ask to meet with us, speak with us, have any kind of interaction and communication, but I, I think initially, we, we shouldn't have our minds tainted prior to when the public has an opportunity to, to hear why they're seeking the position and what they bring to the community as a member, as a, as a potential member of this legislative body.
Mr. Brown?
So, um, one of the things that I've found is that in, in the last year, I've had several people ask me what it's like to be elected, and what's, what, what the time commitment is and so forth, because they've expressed interest in doing the same, and I would say there's probably half the people I've spoken to at the end of the conversation have indicated it's not something they're going to pursue. Just, you know, I mean, perhaps because of the time commitment or the need to be in public or whatever the case may be, I don't want to have people applying who don't have, haven't had a chance to talk to us and ask us what the job's really about, and then apply and have us think, yeah, they're great, and then they get into the job and they say this really isn't for them. So I, I see it as a two-way communication, that they're interviewing us about whether the job is something that's suited for their personality and their stage in life, as much as we're interviewing them as to whether they're suitable to take the position.
Ms. Brenner?
When do they have to be appointed by, by what date?
Uh, the council has to appoint within 30 days of the resignation date, so by the 31st, well, 30th, I guess.
Month of March.
The whole month of March, okay.
But it...
Mr. Cremmon?
Isn't it the, the desire of the council to make the appointment on the 17th? Isn't that what the proposed schedule is?
That's kind of the way it's scheduled out now, you know, if people were ready, we could do it on the 3rd, but, but depending which method I'm hearing gel here, it could go either way.
Okay.
I don't think there's a real hurry.
Well...
Ms. Brenner?
What about then letting them come and make their comments on the 3rd, and then council members could meet with them and stuff after that till the 17th? I just want to make sure that we're not having them give their comments and then us voting that same evening, because then...
Okay, well, it seems like there's two, two systems that are kind of going on here. One is that we would get the applications next week, we'd have until the 3rd to review them, no one would talk with any of the applicants during that period, they would come give their public presentations, and then we'd have two more weeks to interview them personally, then we'd vote on the 17th. The other way is we'd get the applications next week, people could start interviewing as soon as they get their hands on an application, they would come do their public thing on the 3rd, we could either vote on the 3rd, or we could wait until the 17th to do further.
Oh, boy.
So there's kind of two, whether you want to talk with people before the 3rd, or you'd want to leave the slate blank until they do their public thing, that's what Mr. Cremmon was recommending. So, Mr. Brown?
So, one clarifying question from Mr. Crawford, exactly when is your resignation effective?
March 1st.
March 1st, and it's got to be within 30 days of March 1st, okay. And then the second part is, we, we've had one application who, from someone who unfortunately for them actually applied from the wrong district, so we're not able to consider them, but that was a person I'd never heard of, and for a job of this significance, an appointment of this significance, I'd want as much time as possible to, to, you know, interview a person and ask around and so forth, if, particularly if I didn't know them.
So you want to start the questioning as soon as you get the applications?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
As long as you do...
Someone needs to make a motion about which process we're gonna do, then we can figure it out. Ms. Brenner?
Do I have to write it down? This is gonna be simple motion.
Oh, yeah, I've got a triplicate form.
I am not doing that. I have a tremor, and I, you wouldn't even be able to read my writing anyway. Okay, I move that we, that we appoint on March 17th, give all candidates an opportunity for their comments on March 3rd at, at one of our meeting, at our meeting, and let anybody meet with them whenever they want, what?
Did you say appoint on March 3rd?
No, 17th. But that they can come give their comments on March 3rd.
And people can meet with them whenever they want, starting tomorrow morning?
Yeah, I'm just...
Okay.
Keep it simple.
So the motion is that people can start contacting people individually, immediately. We'll have public interviews, five-minute, are we gonna put a five-minute limit on it?
Five minutes.
Yeah.
Five-minute limit on March 3rd, and then we'll make the appointments on March 17th, hopefully. Any other discussion?
Sounds like a good motion.
Sounds like a good one.
Good motion, Ms. Brenner.
Now, if you just write it down, we can vote on it.
If, for people who don't know, we went to this class on rules of order. I think it was, there was an awful lot of stuff, so we're making jokes about it now.
Okay, so we have the motion in front of us, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No abstain.
All right, passes six-oh with Mr. Crawford abstaining. All right, now we're on to, and I don't know how these got out of order, but my thing, the appointment to fill a vacancy on the Lummi Island Ferry Advisory Committee for a resident property owner, Stu Clark.
I'll move Stu Clark.
All right, there's a motion to appoint Mr. Clark, any discussion?
Just, he's been on there, and this got in late, we don't know how, but it happened, and so they were not able to vote, well, actually, they did vote on it, but somebody abstained, and so something never happened at their last meeting, and I think Stu Clark does bring a lot of information and, and concern about the ferry to the, to the picture.
All right, all those in favor of Mr. Clark, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Introduction items. Is there a motion to introduce the items?
I move we accept the introduction items.
All right, Mr. Mann has moved introduction. Mr. Brown?
Uh, if I, if I may, and I'm not sure if I'm out of sequence here, but I'd like to propose an amendment for what we're introducing for the first ordinance.
All right, why don't we pull that one, and we vote on the other four?
Okay.
So we're gonna pull number one at this point, and we're voting on numbers two through Any other discussion on those? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those passing unanimously, and now number one, which is an ordinance amending Waukesha County Code Title 20 and the Comprehensive Plan Regarding Surface Mine Permitting, the Mineral Resource Lands Designation Process and Mineral Resource Lands Designation Criteria. Mr. Brown?
Uh, so I move that, I move introduction with the following amendment, and if you want to pass these down, these two pages.
I think this is the amendment based on our legal counsel's...
Correct. So at the last meeting, when we were discussing this, we had left it for us, Ms. Frecks, to review the legal language regarding beneficial interest, which she has done, and she's made one suggested addition, and then there's, that addition follows on into a couple of other parts, and then she's confirmed that with the, the Department of Natural Resources rules, I believe, cover the responsibilities for old owners or new owners in terms of the cleanup responsibilities, and so I'd propose removing the language I suggested because it's duplicative with what the Department of Natural Resources is doing.
All right, so we have a proposed amendment to this ordinance in front of us.
And do you want me to read the changes into the record?
Do you need these read into the record, Dana?
That'd be great, thank you.
So under the, first one is under Policy 8K8, after the words beneficial ownership, these, the words have been inserted, or beneficial interest. And then after General Criteria, Section 12, after the words beneficial ownership, also the words or beneficial interest have been inserted. And then in Section 20 dot 73 dot 150, conditional uses, after the words beneficial ownership, the words or beneficial interest have been inserted under section, this is under Section 8, and under Section 9 has been struck out in its entirety.
All right, and these were all recommended to us from our legal counsel. Any other discussion on the proposed amendment? Ms. Brenner?
I'm gonna support it, but I would like, I'm gonna make sure that our legal counsel gets this email from Peter Willing that has a concern raised about one of them, but I think it's the kind of concern that should be discussed when we get to it in committee.
Yep.
And, and, uh, Mr. Chair, I've actually already forwarded that to Ms. Frecks for review.
Um, yeah.
She already has it, you said.
Oh, okay, already have it.
Mr. Cremmon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I really appreciate the diligence and the astuteness of my colleague, Councilmember Brown, but I do want to bring to the attention of not just the legislative body here, but to the public, that it, it's very atypical and not customary to be taking action on an introduction item, and this is the second time that we've done so, and it explicitly says, you know, on the agenda bill, the agenda, council agenda for the regular meeting, that under introduction items, no action will be taken, and I think it's, in this particular instance, there's not a problem with it, but I, it's, it's, there's no need, and it's not necessary to, to actually take any action on an introduction item, because if it needs to be fine-tuned or honed or embellished, we, we do that when we, when we take up the issue before the public and in committee, et cetera. So, again, I, I really appreciate the, you know, the hard work and the, you know, the seriousness that Councilmember Brown is bringing to the council, I've noticed it ever since he's, you know, joined us, and I really appreciate the, you know, the hard work, because you're very astute and you're very diligent and very hardworking, and, but I, I just think that to, to be taking action on an introduction item is, is something that, as I say, we, we don't normally do, and there's no reason, there's really no compelling reason why we, we should be taking action on any introduction item.
Well, I'll, I'll take some of the heat for this, because I think what happened is, we asked our legal counsel to review this at our last meeting, and she came back with some ideas, so when the agenda was getting put together, it should have went into a committee to have this discussion today, because the reason we wanted to make these changes is because it's scheduled for a hearing on March 3rd, and if we didn't make the changes this evening, and we had another hearing, and then made those changes, we'd have to have a third hearing, so that's the reason we're trying to do that, this, this evening. Ms. Brenner?
But there's, I recall we've, I don't know if we've always had them in committee, but I know that we've had ordinances where we'll just say number two as amended, and so it's amended, and the, the, the information was for clarification on the record, not for, we're not taking an action, but we, we're amending it. We've done amendments many times, too.
Amending is taking action.
But we're, we are only accepting these items, we're not actually taking it, we're just accepting them for introduction.
Yeah, it's kind of, it is action.
And it would be nice for whoever is responsible for, you know, this is the second time in, I think, in the last two or three meetings that we've, that we've taken action on, on a introduction item, and it, you know, after your explanation, I understand the, the urgency and the rationale for, for taking action on, you know, the, the rare action that we take on an introduction item, but it would be nice to be apprised of, of these kinds, you know, this, I don't know when this was decided we were going to do it, it's all printed out, it would have been nice to be given a heads-up that, that this needed to be done and why, and it all makes sense, and so, you know, I, I guess I'll acquiesce and, you know, ask the, the chair to just continue on.
Right, yeah, I think in the past, sometimes we've prepared two versions, and we could have had another version in the introduction with these changes, and then we could have pulled one, and then we wouldn't be going through this, but we didn't. Mr. Brown?
So I just wanted to first thank Mr. Cremmon for his kind words, and my motivation is simply to, to maximize the transparency and get this, the changes out there, so that the, the public has the maximum amount of time to review what we're gonna vote on.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, now you got me curious. It says council action will not be taken, well, if we accept these, we're taking action, if you, if you look at it that way, so how is that any different than...
Where's our parliamentarian when you hear it?
Yeah, really. Maybe Karen knows.
So, so we have the proposed amendment in front of us, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes six to one with Mr. Crawford opposed. Now we have the introduction item, this item for introduction in front of us, ordinance number one as amendment, any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We are on to committee reports, are there any committee, any reports from the committees?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Natural Resources this morning had a presentation by Washington Department Fish and Wildlife on the Puget Sound Nearshore Ecosystem Restoration Project. This is a part, this is a project that's being kind of led by the Army Corps of Engineers, there's a, there's numerous state and federal agencies that are also involved in the project. They went through a process called the General Investigation by the Army Corps of Engineers, where they were locating potential sites for the ecosystem restoration, and they, going through the process, they originally came up with 500 potential project sites, then they started narrowing it down, they came up with 198 on the second pass, third pass down to 36, to 18, and then the last pass, they came up with 11 sites, one of which is the Nuksek River Delta area. It's a very large, long-range project, it, it's about $300 million for, for our portion up here in, in the Nuksek Delta. The process right now is, the, the core is preparing a final feasibility report that will be due out in the fall of 2015, and once that report has been issued, it has to go back to Washington DC to get congressional authorization and appropriation, which, in other words, it goes kind of into a black hole, we not, there's no good timeline to be able to expect when any decisions will come out of there, so it's, it's at a 10% design phase, it will not be advanced past that until after the congressional authorization does happen, or it goes into an outreach, data collection, and design process, which will be a lot of public outreach and ideas from us up here. We did express some disappointment as far as the involvement that the local government here and local, you know, ag partners and our partners throughout the county have not really been apprised of this project, and it's been cooking for 14 years, so we made it very clear that we feel that there needs to be a, a better mechanism for outreach as we, you know, proceed through this schedule, so the construction would take place sometime after that, but it's, it's certainly a long, long-range process, so that's it.
Great, thank you. Anything from planning?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, in the planning committee, we talked about the comprehensive plan update, which is in 2016, this is a very important process we go through every 10 years or so to update our zoning and our land use designations and the text, and basically the guides, the rules for how land use is conducted in Waukesha County, and as it stands right now, we'll have a draft environmental impact statement out this month, then the planning commission will take up the issue with hearings and presentations on, as I mentioned... on, as I mentioned, the zoning and Comprehensive Plan Text. They will make a recommendation to us. It will come to us in the first half of 2016, and hopefully, if everything goes according to plan, we will have hearings and make any changes that we have, and approve it sometime in June of 2016. So it's a-- it's a long process, much-- not as long as that one. But it's a very important one, and I hope people will get involved in it. We did not have a lot of folks here today for our committee meeting, but I assume that 'll change as we go forward on this project.
All right. Anything in finance?
Mr. Chair, the county executive gave his usual, very informative talk today, and I just wanted to bring up one thing, which is he talked about the website, which I think, if I remember correctly, the new website is up and running on March 11th, is that right? And I understand that'll be a vast improvement on what we've got. So I'm certainly looking forward to that. And the second part, which is not actually finance, but was something I was involved in, which was the parliamentary procedure training, which Ms. Brenner brought up earlier. And I think the general feeling from everybody who attended the group was that it was a really worthwhile exercise, and it was a lot more fun than people expected, so.
All right, we're on to other items, and I think Mr. Crennan has something.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Something from Public Works. We didn't meet today.
Not Public Works, but I was gonna make a couple of comments that were in finance, and yeah, finance.
Okay, go ahead.
Me? Oh, okay. Well, I do agree with Councilmember Brown. It was fun. The person who led this whole exercise did it-- I thought she did a great job, because the subject isn't fun. But we got hit with so many things, and, I mean, I just feel like we've been bombarded. And before we start making changes because of that exercise, I do think we should meet and decide what changes, if any, were necessary. For example, making things in thirds and make-- you know, writing them out ahead of time and-- oh, just-- I mean, I can't even remember all this stuff. I was trying to keep up. It was real hard to remember it all. But I do think that-- I think our system works pretty well the way it is, and so I like it the way it is. Finance. I know I'm gonna really try to be positive how I say this, but back at Budget Time, we had that discussion on changing the purchasing code, because we got dumped with 23-- 22, 23 project-based funds that we don't get to look at except the first view from 30,000 feet. And today, and it was-- I felt like there was some angst, because I actually did something with it, and Councilmember Wymer actually did something with it. But my recollection of the whole discussion at Budget Time was, the executive said, "Well, that's your purchasing code that allows it, and if you don't want that, you guys change it." And somebody said to me, "Yeah, Barbara, you do something." So I did. And it wasn't to avoid anybody or anything like that. And I was lucky enough to have Councilmember Carl Wymer agree to work with me, which isn't always an easy task, so-- for-- because of me, not because of him. So there, I'm saying it on a positive-- in a positive way, that I did what I thought I was asked to do.
Right. And it'll be coming back to us in a little over a month for some sort of discussion. Okay, I think we're on to other business items, and Mr. Crennan has one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Lummi Indian Business Council had a annual gathering on the 30th of January that was well-attended. I was really pleased to see such a strong turnout from the county council. And it was an opportunity to meet with the members of the council, as well as other elected officials from throughout Wacom County, including the mayor of Bellingham, city council members from Bellingham, Mayor Ferndale, the-- I think all port commissioners were there, as well as State Representative Luanne Van Morven. And it was just a real nice opportunity to work together, exchange ideas in a social atmosphere, not conduct any business, but develop relationships. Relationships that are gonna serve all of us well. And I know-- when I say all, I'm speaking collectively, between, you know, cities and county and the nation. And it just really was a very uplifting and positive thing. We have some very serious issues that we're going to have to work with, not just the Lummi Nation, but with the city of Bellingham, as well as Ferndale, and all the other cities in Wacom County. And it was just a real, unique opportunity for all of us to get together and get to know each other as people and develop relationships. And I've been asked by the Lummi Chair of the Business Council, Tim Baloo, on behalf of the Lummi Nation, to each one of us that attended-- and as I say, the county council was well-represented at this event. And there were a couple of council members who were unable to attend because of prior commitments. And there-- I will say that we did get-- I think we got eight days prior notice before the event was held, but-- so I understand that. But the Lummi Nation asked me if I would distribute these honor coins to the members who were unable to attend on the 30th. Their honor coins, and they simply say, "The honor of one is the honor of all." And each one of us got one of these coins, and I was asked to distribute these coins to the members who were unable to. So I thank council members Mann, Crawford, and-- Barry, did you--
I was sick.
You were sick? Okay. So it's my pleasure, on behalf of the Lummi Nation-- actually, on behalf of Wacom County, asked by the Lummi Nation to distribute these coins so that you can keep them and realize that-- I believe that the honor of one is the honor of all, and I hope that you're able to keep these and look at them from time to time and just think good things.
So--
Thank you.
Well, he's doing that.
Ms. Brenner?
I also wanted to add that the county executive, Jack Louse, was also there. That's okay. I knew you meant to say--
I totally forgot.
Since I'm-- you know, he and I go nose-to-nose on so many things, I wanted to say something nice. Then also, if we're talking about stuff--
No, we're not stuff yet. We're on other items--
Okay.
Other business items. And then we'll move to council member updates.
Okay.
All right. Any other business items? Okay, council member updates. Now it's all you.
Okay. We were invited to All-American Marine Incorporated to-- they're over down at Fairhaven by the-- you know, just across the tracks on Harris there. And what an incredible business, the work they do. They're making all these ferries, and I couldn't help but think of Lummi Island. And it was 40 mile-an-hour winds that day, and we went out-- after the meeting and after the tour of the facility, we went out on this brand-new ferry they just finished, and it was amazing. I was really thinking, oh, I'm gonna get seasick, because they had, you know, stuff to eat and everything. But it-- nothing-- I mean, these are those catamaran-type ferries. Wow, they are so well-balanced. It was amazing. And so if anybody gets a chance to go down there and see the ferries they're making, they are just magnificent.
All right. Other item, council member updates. We can start at your end, Mr. Brown.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Two things. One is, there's been a lot of-- the nature of government and intergovernmental relations is often people get together to talk about issues that are concerning them, and that's often an issue of conflict, where one side is upset about something and is asking another side to respond. And sort of to create a different tone, last week, we had a small meeting with the county executive, the mayor, representatives of the Lummi Nation, myself, and Carl Wymer, and the focus was exclusively on trying to identify some win-wins. Areas where all of our interests were closely aligned, and to set up a program where we could identify those and then spend some time, you know, over the course of the next few years, working on those issues. Just as a reference point, so that when there is difficult conversations to be had in the room, they can be had with people who the day before may have been working on something where everybody's interests were aligned. And I think it's fair to say that was well-received. The other thing I'd like to bring up is that this Friday, for those of you who may not be aware, is the 200th year anniversary of the Treaty of Ghent, which is the-- the Treaty of Ghent, peace and amity, was ratified by Congress and became law after President Madison signed it on February 16, 1815. And that's the Treaty of Peace with Canada, and it's gonna be celebrated at the Peace House.
All right. Mr. Buchanan?
Well, I'd just like to take an opportunity to wish Councilmember Crawford all the success in the world. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I know you'll do well.
Thank you. Mr. Mann?
That's all I wanted to say to Mr. Crawford. Sam, it's been great working with you, and it was fun running against you. And it really has been great working with you, and you'll be missed.
Ms. Brenner?
Oh, I just wanted to say, I would've been at that meeting where you guys all-- I didn't know about it. Who--
It wasn't a public meeting.
It wasn't.
You chose very carefully.
Gee. I wasn't invited.
To be perfectly fair, it was at my house, and I have limited space around the table.
Oh, I don't take up my space.
No, but you do take up a chair.
Okay.
Ms. Crennan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I do wanna apologize to the county executive. I-- that was not intended to be a slight. I was very pleased that you were there. I miss Cindy. But, yeah, you were there, and you've always been very good about showing up to those kind of events, and I appreciate that. I do wanna-- I know we've talked about this already, but at the last meeting, when Councilmember Crawford made his bombshell announcement. But it really has been an honor to work alongside you as a council member and to work with you as the executive for 15 years. And you really are one principled individual, besides being astute and really knowing your stuff when you research it, as you always do. And I just-- you are going to be missed. You are an asset to this council, and you're gonna be very difficult to replace. Your perspectives and what you bring to the fore is really a treasure. And you've really made a difference in Wacom County and on this council. And I wish you the best, and just come back and see us from time to time, will you?
You bet. Thank you. Mr. Louse?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to take a moment, Mr. Crawford, and thank you for your years of service to Wacom County. Sam, you've been a friend for many, many years, and we've had good conversations outside of government. But in your role as council member, you are a true professional. Really appreciate your sense of balance between the legislative branch and the executive branch. I think that you've done an exemplary job. We all have differences in terms of what policies and so on and so forth, but you play the-- not play, that's not the right word, is-- is you conduct business in a very, very professional way, and I very much appreciate that, and I wish you the best as you move forward. My younger-- and he says better-looking brother works in Linden, so I'm gonna have to get my information from you, because I know he's in Westside quite often. So, Sam, I really do wish you the best.
Thanks. All right. We'll leave the last word of the evening to Mr. Crawford.
I just am humbled and blown away by all the very comments-- appreciative comments you guys have made, so thank you very much. I just have one last request. We are going to meet as, you know, the executive and Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Crennan in Washington, D.C. However, this is my last council meeting, formal council meeting. So this is a little out of order, but I'd like-- if you would give me the honor to pass the gavel down here, and I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting. It's my last one.
I'm ready, bye.
And I assume that is the conclusion of all of our business?
No other business.
All right. For the last time, I'm gonna say it, we are adjourned.